My name is Scott Kiesner. I'm the Superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools. Let me welcome you and thank you for coming tonight. I know this is a very important decision that impacts all of you in this room. And I know the school board greatly appreciates that you'll be providing them comments tonight as they deliberate on an important decision that hopefully will have an outcome that will benefit the entire Stafford community. I'd like to recognize the school board members and member of the Board of Supervisors that are here. Ms. Patricia Healy, who's the school board chair, Ms. Holly Hazard, Ms. Irene Egan, she'll be coming in, Ms. Jamie Decatur. Oh, she's here. Not only she's coming in, she's here. Ms. Pamela Young. And I know one other board member will be joining us soon, Mr. Dewayne McCosker. And I do want to thank Supervisor Jack Cavalier for being here tonight. So how we're going to do it is we're going to give about a 10 to 15-minute presentation on the two plans that the school board has decided to move forward for the public hearings. And then our school board chair will address the audience on the format for tonight. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Matt Townsend, who's our supervisor of planning and GIS, and he will review the two plans.
As Dr. Kiesner stated, my name is Matt Townsend. I serve as the supervisor of planning and GIS for Stafford County Public Schools. I'm going to kick the meeting off tonight with a brief presentation overviewing the two plans that the board selected and voted on to bring forward to the community for the purposes of receiving your feedback via public hearing. I'll start off reviewing the timeline, discussing where we have been and where we are going. And then I will review plans E21 and E22. After that, I'll turn it over to the public hearing component of the meeting. Where we've been, since the redistricting process kicked off in mid-November, we've had one community meeting where the consultants discussed the current state of our elementary schools and reviewed the need to redistrict. There have been three town hall meetings where the consultants brought their then-proposed boundary plans for discussion and community questions and answers. And then there were a total of six so far, if my count is correct, school board work sessions where the school board discussed and deliberated matters regarding this redistricting. Where we're going, so the path forward, we have two public hearings. The first is occurring right now, and the next one is tomorrow at Stafford High School, beginning at the same time, 6:30 p.m. There is a scheduled work session next Thursday, March 21st, beginning at 6 o'clock in the Professional Development Center in the central office complex, Room 14. And at the March 26th school board meeting, the school board is scheduled to vote on a boundary plan to take effect for the 2019-2020 school year. I'm going to briefly review Plan E21 and touch on some areas that are being proposed for reassignment. I just want to stress that this is just an overview. It is not an exhaustive look at these two plans, just for the sake of brevity, so we can move on to the public comment section. An area to note, or an emphasis to note, is these maps are hung in the lobby for your viewing, as well as the large format file posted on the website, so you can zoom in and dive down specifically to your exact area to increase the level of detail. So here we have the northern areas of the proposed Plan E21. The shading represents the proposed boundaries. The red line represents the current boundaries, and the black and red flag represents the school locations themselves. I'm going to read from my notes here, just to make sure I don't get this incorrect. We're going to work our way across the county from west to east and just briefly touch on areas that are being proposed for reassignment. And again, this is not exhaustive. This is just an overview. All right, so from Rock Hill, Rock Hill alleviates Brent by receiving neighborhoods such as Millbrook, Hidden Lake, Crown Manor, Roseville Plantation, and County Wood Estates. Garrisonville receives Arbor Glen and Marshall Estates from Winding Creek. Brent receives part of Rolling Meadows and homes along Mountain View Road from Winding Barrett receives, or relieves Park Ridge Elementary School along the 610 corridor, receiving subdivisions such as Meadowwood Village, Elizabeth Park, and Cabin Creekwood. Park Ridge gains Embry Mill. Winding Creek gains Courthouse Square and part of Stafford Oaks from Burns. Burns receives Carriage Point, Villages of Acquahia, and Forest and Woods. Hampton Oaks receives an additional piece of the Hampton Oaks neighborhood in Acquahia Moncur receives Foxwood Village, Woodstream, Potomac Hills, Port Acquahia, Hills of Acquahia, Acquahia Town Center Apartments, Lakewood Apartments, Holly Mead, Arbor Grove Apartments, Spring Hill Townhouses, and Quartz at Stafford. Those are all pretty much right along this area right here. Wide Water and Stafford Elementary Schools do not gain areas. For the southern areas, we'll work our way from east to west, starting at Grafton Village. Grafton Village gains areas along Brook Road, south of the Andrew Chapel intersection, including Bexley Manor and Mount Hope Estates, as well as Potomac Run Farm. Ferry Farm gains Kendallwood East, Kendallwood Estates, Little Falls Village, Holly Ridge, Brookfield, Brookfield Hills, and Towering Oak Estates in this area. Falmouth gains Sunnyside, which is here, as well as the villages at England Run, England Run, and England Run Townhouses in this area. Rocky Run gains the townhomes of England Run North and England Run Apartments, right there and right there. And lastly, Hartwood gains England Run North, located there. Here we have the data table for Plan E21. This is part of the packet that's been posted on the website, and this will be posted again as part of this presentation. For Plan E22, I will focus on the areas that differ from Plan E21. The pink highlighted area in this map shows the proposed Hampton Oaks Elementary School in Plan E22 that was proposed for Moncur and Plan E21. And then the yellow area represents areas proposed for assignment to Moncur Elementary School under Plan E22, whereas in Plan E21, they are proposed for Hampton Oaks. Just to review those in detail here, so this is the areas of difference between the plans. We have Potomac Hills, Port Acquahia, Woodstream, Lakewood Apartments, Holly Mead, Quartz at Stafford, and Acquahia Town Center Apartments, right there, as well as Spring Hill Townhouses and Arbor Grove Apartments. Those are being proposed under Plan E22 to attend Hampton Oaks Elementary School. Conversely, we have this area in yellow, which is Acquahia Harbor. They are proposed to attend Moncur in Plan E22. Here's a look at the northern part as a whole of Plan E22, the same as Plan E21, except for the areas that we discussed on the last slide. And again, the same areas in the south, or the same assignments in the south, as E21 Here we have the data table associated with Plan E22, which we'll skip by quickly because it's already on the website as part of the E22 packet, and again, it'll be posted as part of this presentation. And with that, the overview is complete. I'll turn it over to Cherie as we transition to the public hearing section of this meeting. Thank you.
Yes, school board members, if you go ahead and take a seat. Good evening. My name is Cherie Johnson. I'm the Director of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement. At this time, we're going to move into the public comment section. So if you are interested in speaking, if you would please make your way up to either microphone, we have two microphones up front, and please begin to make a line. Make sure that you fill out the card. Many of you may have picked up a card at the front, an index card. It has your name and address on it. We have two members of the communication team that'll be up front with manila envelopes to take those cards from you, if you would. So if you'll begin to make your way and make a line, and we'll begin. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Healy right now to go over the rules of the public hearing. Ms. Healy.
I don't have anything. I don't know how to do that.
For those of you who are familiar with our meetings, we have a little blurb that we read before public comment, so this isn't necessarily aimed at this hearing. It's something that we read every time we have speakers. Speakers shall identify themselves by providing their name and address, and you can take care of that on the comment card, which you will hand in when you come down to speak. Each individual may speak only once during the public hearing. Comments this evening, well, actually, these are a little different from the ones we normally read. Comments this evening shall be limited to the matter of the elementary school redistricting. That is the purpose of the public hearing this evening. Three minutes shall be allotted to each speaker. However, the board chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with approval from the board, and we will not be restricting that time this evening. Any comment which is profane or abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Now, do we have the lighting system for the three minutes, Ms. Hall? How will they know when their time is up?
We do not have a lighting system, however, they will hear it. They will hear the buzzer go off.
There will be a buzzer. And because we expect that there will be, you know, a number of speakers, you will need to end your comments when the buzzer goes off. But if you wish to hand in your comments, you can give them to the clerk after you speak. And we will be having another of these meetings tomorrow night at Stafford High School, 6:30. All right, so let's get started with the first speaker. We've got two in line over here, so.
Hello, Rachel Miller from the Garrisonville District, Embry Mill. Good evening. Again, I am here tonight to stress the importance of my neighborhood's plans of small changes that we have asked to be put into effect for the two current plans. The current plans have our children, have children in the county shifting north to Garrisonville Elementary and Barry Elementary. This has enabled to relieve some space at the southern parts of the southern schools. With the current plans in place, Garrisonville is going to open up next year at 68.99% capacity, and it drops to 66.86 in the year 2023-2024. Barrett is opening up at 80.33% capacity and is predicted to drop to 76.71 in that year 2023-2024. So both schools are dropping in attendance over time. As schools continue to rise here in the south, more redistricting is going to have to happen, and they're going to have to be pushed north further. So more redistricting, because we all know there is no new school going to happen until we're at capacity, at least a lot closer than Garrisonville and Barrett are going to be at. These are communities that are being moved from Margaret Brent to Garrisonville, but barely anyone's being moved to Margaret Brent. So that is allowing Margaret Brent to open up next year at 69.27% capacity, and it's predicted to rise very slowly to 74.54% of, in the year 2023-2024. I don't know if, like North Augustine, for instance, might not know that, but that is what the predictions are for the two current plans. Meanwhile, we have Embry Mill Phase 1 driving four miles to Park Ridge Elementary School in the two plans that currently on the table, through other tenant zones, to include Autumn Ridge. Park Ridge is the fifth closest school to our neighborhood. We also would be the only neighborhood to move on to Colonial Forge one day. Our kids are going to leave all their friends behind. To add to it, Park Ridge Elementary is going to be overcrowded again in six years. So another shift north to those northern schools. Here are some facts about Augustine North, which is an amazing community here in Stafford, as everybody knows. The neighborhood lies smack in the middle of Winding Creek and Margaret Brent Elementary's. They account for about 68 children now and are projected to be 85 children in the year 2022-2023 school year. They're currently also zoned for Rodney Thompson Middle School and Colonial Forge High School. Here are some facts about Margaret Brent Elementary, an amazing school here in Stafford. Margaret Brent is going to need some students if we're going to level out some capacity. They're also top-rated on GreatSchools.org, and any neighborhood would really be lucky to be there. Margaret Brent also feeds into Rodney Thompson Middle School, where Augustine North is zoned anyways. I have full faith that Augustine North community and their representative and all the representatives care about this county as a whole, as I do. I trust that they want the best. What I'm proposing is what's the best for the county as a whole, and the numbers and facts back of it. Please consider these tweaks, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time, and I want to point out that the task in front of you is daunting, and that any decision you make will be critical, and I have the full faith and confidence, as the previous speaker does, that you will make decisions with the best of intentions. My issue lies in both plans affect my children the same. They both attend Margaret Brent Elementary School currently, and to no fault of their own, by virtue of being active duty military, they're in fourth grade and kindergarten, and they've each seen three different schools. And that's just not the continuity we wanted. As I'm coming close to retirement here in Stafford, where I'm moving, Country Wood Estates has been a neighborhood for a very long time, and I understand that redistricting is necessary, but where both plans currently lie is the corner of Rosedale and Greenfield Roads, where the plans currently split. So my children will go to Rock Hill Elementary School, and the kids right next to us, 50 yards away, will remain in Margaret Brent. So I understand that when we redistrict, you know, main thoroughfares, main roads, secondary roads, can be easy ways to, you know, segment districts. But when we talk like going into each individual neighborhoods, nothing as crazy as Embry Mill, as large as that neighborhood is, something as small as Country Wood Estates, we're being bisected, and the entire neighborhood, which maybe have 40 kids, K through 12, so there's not a substantial need to move them. I just want to implore you all to take a look at those smaller circumstances and potentially have some type of waiver process or, you know, exemptions, if you will, for unique situations like mine for the future. Thank you. Steve Stevenson, 113 Greenfield Road.
My name is Christina Beltran, and I live in Embry Mill Phase 1. It would be really great if my neighborhood could stay together at one school, but seeing the plans that have made it through and looking at the projected numbers, I understand that our numbers are growing too large for that. The precedent to separate has already been set with our neighborhoods splitting for the high schools. If moved to Park Ridge, my kids will be moving from elementary school to middle school with many of the same children, and then splitting off all on their own for high school. They will also have to pass through areas districted to Winding Creek to get to Park Ridge. There are four other elementary schools that are closer to us. I don't feel that it is beneficial to move the kids to a further school with feeder patterns that don't make sense, when there are some simple solutions to the current proposed plans that keep Phase 1 at Winding Creek and are beneficial to the county. Proximity and not creating islands has been a goal with this redistricting. In the current plans, Embry Mill is an island. The bit of area shown on the map connecting us with the rest of Park Ridge doesn't contain any actual roadways. Autumn Ridge is closer to Park Ridge than we are, and putting Autumn Ridge in Embry Mill Phase 2 at Park Ridge and Embry Mill Phase 1 at Winding Creek makes sense for proximity, gets rid of that island, and lowers the amount of capacity filled at Park Ridge. Another goal has been to utilize the schools that are under capacity. Going over maps and numbers repeatedly has made me increasingly aware that we are not making use of some of the under-capacity schools in our county. Margaret Brent is a great school that is well under capacity with the current plans. Augustine North is less than two miles from Margaret Brent, and putting them at Margaret Brent makes good use of the space available and alleviates some of the overcrowding at Winding Creek. If it's true that a new elementary school will not be considered until the existing schools in our county are filled to capacity, then we should be doing all we can to actually make use of the schools that are under capacity. With the solutions that we provided the board, Winding Creek, Park Ridge, and Margaret Brent will be more balanced, so that we can avoid moving students again five years from now due to the same issue of overcrowding. Our suggestions also support the goals of proximity and continuity. I sincerely hope that you will consider these tweaks, not only for the benefit of myself and my neighbors, but for Stafford County as a whole. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Smalley. I live at 66 White Pine Circle Apartment 203 in Acquahia Terrace Apartments, which is a non-Section 8, non-income-restricted apartment complex off of Forest and Woods, one of the only ones that goes to Moncur at this time. Carriage Point is the one that is directly next to us, but they are all Section 8 or privately owned. One of the concerns that I have with us going to Anthony Burns in both plans is the fact that the children would be bused down Route 1 and through the Courthouse Road HOV construction site. Our children right now are getting home anywhere between 4:30 p.m. and 4:15, as one of the last buses that comes out of Moncur Elementary. Going to Anthony Burns, I have the serious concern that of the 31-plus children that get off at Carriage Point down the road, and the 33-42 children that live in Acquahia Terrace, we are going to be waiting for our children at 5:00 p.m. to get off the bus. These are also the children that, due to backups on Route 1 from any traffic incident on 95, are already becoming late to school. And on at least one occasion, with one incident that has happened on Route 1, they have been bussed past a dead body. I would like them to stay with the children because my apartment building backs up directly to the backyard of Acquahia Harbor. Those children play with Acquahia Harbor. They have gone to Moncur since they were in kindergarten. I have a fifth grader and a third grader. I've already moved once to keep my child at Moncur, but knowing that all these other kids that can't switch to be going to a school that they don't want to go to, even Hampton Oaks would be better for them, because it would be closer. Going to Anthony Burns, they would be bussed past Stafford Elementary and then go across 95 just to get to Anthony Burns. Going to Hampton Oaks, although they would be a little closer, it just makes it a lot harder for these kids. The other concern I have is that my children are very musically inclined, and looking at Anthony Burns, they do not have a chorus program, they do not have a ukulele club, they do not have a drum group. I have not seen any drama program, nor have I seen a lot of the after-school activities that my children and several others that are in that complex are involved with. One of the other little things that I would like to point out is that at least three of the children that are in Carriage Point are the tour ambassadors that have been touring Moncur through the entire building process, and they would not be allowed to go to that school. Those children would already be heartbroken, and they have already made it clear that they would be absolutely heartbroken after seeing the inside of the school and giving their input to the rebuilding of Moncur, that they're going to Anthony Burns.
Hello, my name is Shay Copina. I live at 285 Pear Blossom. This is my first meeting, and I just want you to know that I support all the Embry Mill women that spoke tonight, and I just wanted to have a face so that I could meet everybody. And I also want you to think about how it seems common that a lot of people are passing many schools to get to one that's farther away from their home, and I think that's important to think about, especially kids that are young in kindergarten and in first grade. It's a lot for them to be on the bus for a long time. It's already a long day. So please consider that in Embry Mill, and especially Phase 1, because we pass many schools. There's some in walking distance to us. And I just, I just want you to think about what's best for the kids, and I know that you are, and it's a very challenging task that you have, and we appreciate all your hard work. But it seems like it's very disruptive to many parents, and it's caused a lot of stress, I think, for everyone. So I hope we can all come to a good decision, and I support all the details that the women have written out. I just don't have that. I just wanted to say hello, and I agree with them, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Johnson. I live in Eastern View across from the high school. You all know me. I've been advocating for fixing feeder patterns for my children and for making improvements to my kids' school for the past five years. These schools are extra important to my husband and myself, because we actually attended them ourselves. My husband even had the pleasure of being redistricted from Moncur, then to Garrisonville, and finally to Park Ridge. I'd like to reassure you, it didn't screw him up, but actually, it probably explains a lot. It's been obvious the board has not intended to address feeder patterns through the middle school fiasco, the high school redistricting last year, and now again through the elementary redistricting. I think things have actually been made worse for a lot of people. What I'm asking is if not now, then when this is over, make it a priority to address these small groups of kids with very few children who move with them. My kids are one of roughly 16 kids who go from AG Wright here to north. I have a friend who wanted to be here but had a sick child, whose children are one of roughly seven that go from Garrisonville to Rodney Thompson. In a growing county, I understand feeder patterns can't be perfect, but they can surely be better. Maybe when looking at the transfer policy, you could add a social hardship clause that allows for children who are part of a feeder pattern below some set number or percentage of children to apply to transfer. It obviously affects every child and family differently, and every situation's unique. This, of course, only works if any middle school on the north end of the county were open to transfers, which they're not. Since they're not, maybe building a larger capacity elementary in Embry Mill, as was planned, and expanding AG Wright into Garrisonville could give the north end room to grow and transfers the flexibility to happen. My last thought is to express my frustration for leaving Garrisonville way under capacity. Margaret Brent, Rock Hill, and Garrisonville are walkable to one another. Yet after this redistricting, their free and reduced lunch rates are 20% apart from one school to the other. The explanation I was given is that kids are being sent to the closest schools. Rather than fix some of the socioeconomic disparities, the school board chose to move the least amount of people, rather than to actually make each school as good and well-equipped as it can be for its students. I know at previous meetings, the plan was to address some of these disparities in the dense north, but I don't think it was done. Our kids deserve better. Every child in this county deserves to go to a school that is best equipped, that they can live up to their potential. Use our schools. Use Brent, use Garrisonville. Kids have to move. We can't have schools down to 60% capacity in four years, or we'll be back here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shamine Taylor, and I live at 104 Frisian Lane in Embry Mills Phase 1. I'm not going to go over a lot of the stuff that we've sent you in emails as far as the proximity and everything. I think one of the biggest things for me and for my children is, we just started this year at Winding Creek going to school early to help with the second bus loads and ensure that they get to school on time, get home on time. I know last year, my kids were at Winding Creek, and they were getting home 99% of the time, almost quarter to five, and we finally made the adjustment because there's no longer any second bus loads, we're going to school a little bit earlier, and just to send us somewhere that's further away doesn't make sense to me. You know, we're close to the Anthony Burns, we're close to the Winding Creek, but you guys want to send us to Park Ridge, and I just don't understand that. My kids finally got to a place where I was driving my kids to school every day, and I was picking them up every day, and it was a pain, and I had to get my parents to help just to ensure that their day wasn't from, I think my son was getting to school, leaving the bus at 8:07 and not getting home to 4:45. That's ridiculous. And we really have to help our children grow. It's an exhausting day. These are core times in their lives that they're going to grow and learn and get educated here in Stafford County, and just to send them somewhere that's further away, it just doesn't make sense. And if you could please consider sending Embry Mill Phase 1, I mean, not that I want our neighborhood to get split by any means, but I do understand that Phase 2 is just in Phase 2. We're going to have a Phase 3, we're going to continue to grow as a community. That is a large development that is happening. But at this point, I mean, they are closer to Park Ridge, and if I was in Phase 2, I would kind of understand that change to Park Ridge. And if I was in Phase 2, I would kind of understand that change to Park Ridge, but Phase 1, we have to go through Autumn Ridge, we have to go through Phase 2 just to get to another school. And it's heartbreaking for my kids, it's heartbreaking for me to tell my parents again, "Well, now you're going to have to start taking them back to school. Now they might have to come home a little bit later." It's not fair to our kids anymore, and I just really hope that you guys can find in your hearts to do some type of adjustment, not just for our community, but, you know, for the ones that are going to Margaret Brent, you know, for the ones that have three or four elementary schools to pass through. Again, proximity, I think, is key. Our transportation, I know we don't have a lot of bus drivers at this point in time, but definitely allowing us to go to schools that are closer to our area is only going to help with the transportation. I mean, Courthouse Road is growing, our area is growing like crazy. One accident on Courthouse Road, and our kids are getting home later. And is that fair to the parents? Is that fair to the kids that, you know, have sports and activities after school? No. Does it happen? Absolutely. So just please consider that when you're doing this redistricting. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Hudson. I live at 3 Beechtree Court. That's over in the Stafford Oaks area-ish. And I understand you guys have a decision to make about this. There's no dispute about that, but I just wish it was something that makes sense. The current, both plans would send my kids, I have a five-year-old in elementary school and I have an eight-year-old in third grade, they both would go from Anthony Burns to Winding Creek. And it's only like a small portion here of the Stafford Oaks area would go to, from Anthony Burns to Winding Creek, which is further away, but also seems to be at capacity, you know? And Anthony Burns currently, I think it would be at 83% capacity, I believe, based on the information I reviewed. It wouldn't make sense to move them from someplace that's not near capacity to someplace that's at capacity or over capacity. That doesn't make sense, particularly someplace that's farther away, you know? My five-year-old little girl, you know, for the past few years, as my son was in kindergarten, has been saying she wants to go to Anthony Burns. She wants to go to Anthony Burns. I would drop her, my son, off, take her to preschool, and she would cry the entire way to preschool, you know? And now she's finally there. She's in kindergarten, and, you know, now she has to go from there to someplace, particularly someplace that's over capacity. You know, I grew up in Queens, New York, and I can tell you, I know what overcrowding looks like, I know what a school at capacity looks like, and I don't want that for my kids, you know? And look, I respect the decision you guys have to make, but I think this, if both plans stay the same, it's the wrong decision. It's the wrong decision for my kids. I think, based on what everybody is saying here tonight, it's the wrong decision for all of us.
I'm sorry, I'm getting over a cold. I'm a guy from Acquahia Harbor, and as a private citizen, I just wanted to come and say that I know this totally sucks for everyone. I want to make everybody happy because all their pleas are so impassioned, and everyone loves their kids. I've been here for years. I don't even know what number redistricting this is. I know how hard it is. You guys have listened, you've taken your licks, you have heard me be so critical. I've talked to five of you guys, six of you guys up there. And don't agree, do agree, and I just want to thank you for listening, and this is better than it was before, and I don't look forward to the next one, but I think it'll be better. I think you guys are playing nice together a little bit. Last night was a little bit like, but I think you guys are doing much better, and it makes me feel better. Now, as the Stafford County NAACP Education Chair, what I have to say is, we've seen the plans, we are listening to the citizens, to the people who are in our club, and we're reviewing them. We have not made our decision yet, but we really do appreciate the opportunity to be here and to listen to everyone's opinions, and once we have finalized our decision, I will be back. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Hawkins. I live at 125 Mount Hope Church Road in Stafford. I'm here today to ask you, please don't move Mount Hope Estates to Grafton Village Elementary School. We are right on the edge in both of your plans, so leaving us at Stafford Elementary School would not be a huge lift for you. It's just like moving down and putting our street back with Stafford where we currently are districted. There's not a lot of children that live in Mount Hope Estates that are elementary school-aged, so this really shouldn't have a huge impact on your numbers anyway. However, if you do displace us to Grafton Village, it would cause great hardship on my family and other families that live on my street. First of all, Grafton Village Elementary feeds into Dixon Smith, and we are still districted for Stafford Middle. So my children would go down there and have to make new friends, and then basically, none of those friends will move on with them when they go to Stafford Middle School. Logistical issues also for families. So next year, I will have a third grader who's going to be displaced to Grafton Village. My fifth grader, because of the grandfather clause, will be allowed to stay. He'll be in fifth grade next year, so he'll be at Stafford Elementary. My other child will be at Stafford Middle, and my fourth child will be at Brookpoint High School, but she still can't drive yet, so we're going to have four children in four different schools. And that almost seems kind of ridiculous logistically for us to even, you know, plan things after work as a family, getting kids to after-school activities and childcare and those types of things. I commute to DC every day, driving up and down 95 and just adding a kid way, way down at Grafton Village, way down south from where we live, when we're so much closer to Stafford Elementary, just seems like a nightmare. Also, driving down Brook Road is kind of a mess. That road's been closed for a few months now. I'm not sure when it is going to reopen. That's a dangerous road as well, to drive down that road. It floods down there by the swamp at times. Maybe they're doing some work to try to fix that. I was hoping they would get two lanes each direction down there like Route 1, but it's only going to be one lane each way still. So just that commute all the way down that direction, instead of having us just go right up Andrew Chapel over to Stafford Elementary, is going to cause a lot of difficulty as well for us. If, for some reason, with the numbers, you can't find a way to just pull us back into Stafford Elementary District, hopefully you'll reconsider your grandfather clause and allow siblings of a grandfather child to at least stay for another year at the elementary school they're currently at. And then again, with transfers, with the numbers going where they're going to be, Stafford Elementary is going to be at 88, 91, and 92% capacity for the next three years, so hopefully you don't close that elementary school to transfers like some other schools are closed to transfers. So I appreciate your consideration. We're very small in numbers, that's probably why you haven't heard from us much, but thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Morrison, and I live on Acquahia Drive, but I'm actually speaking for the entire northeast corner. I wanted to talk a little bit about the differences between E2-1 and E2-2. The first point I want to make is that for E2-2 to be truly viable for Moncur, one more APU would probably need to be moved. One of the ideas would be the Hills of Acquahia, and that would be because they're currently at Hampton Oaks, so allowing them to stay at Hampton Oaks would be beneficial, reducing the number of students moved. If that happened, by the numbers, because I enjoy numbers, both Hampton Oaks and Moncur would be expected to be at about 86% capacity in the four years. So why would I argue for E2-2? Well, as you have known, maybe because you've heard me talk before, I really value integration because the research shows how important that is for all students, and if that was to happen, E2-2 would end up having the disparity between those two bordering schools at about 7%. E2-1 currently would have it at about 30%. That is a huge difference between two schools that are touching each other. Similarly, for the minority composition differences, by E2-1, the difference would be a 36% difference, but with E2-2, 4% difference. So we have two schools that are right next to each other that would be much more similar in composition, both economically and racially, which, again, we know is better for students across the board. Other benefits, approximately 800 students who don't have to redistrict, I think that's really important, and some students currently are in APUs that will be redistricted for the third time in five years. That means if they were in kindergarten, they are now going to fifth grade in the third school. That's unnecessary and easily remedied. So I recommend that you really take another look at E2-2 and consider moving Hills of Acquahia back to Hampton Oaks. Thank you. Also, I have charts in case you want them.
My name is Ron Rowe, and I live at the Gables of Augustine, also known as Claiborne Manor, and I thank the board for its time tonight, and I know everybody has a compelling story, and as you see, we're all concerned parents. I've emailed the board previously. This is the view from the entrance to our, from our community. That's Margaret Brent. So I know my theme has always been common sense should prevail throughout this process. We're a small community of just 25 homes, but all of our children, most of them, are elementary school-aged, and it just seems a difficult decision for the members, because I know everybody is concerned about driving past the school where they currently attend. In our situation, we are a matter of feet away from the front door of the school, and if there would be any consideration to putting our children on buses and driving them past the school, which they have known, just doesn't line up with common sense. So I would just ask the board that, as everybody's story is compelling, proximity is something that is key. It's something that I'm concerned about, and I'm also a homeowner, association, board member, and my members who have children who attend Margaret Brent, we're all concerned about this, as are my fellow parents in the room. So I thank the board for its consideration on this. Proximity is key, common sense is key, and I don't envy your position right now, having to strike a balance, because it's a difficult decision. Thank you.
My name is Dan Viegas. I am a resident at 17 Hempstead Lane. I would like to offer my thanks and also, you know, my appreciation for all the hard work you guys have done. It hasn't been easy, as everybody said, but, and I understand there's going to be a lot of changes, and on behalf of my family and my son, I wanted to take this opportunity just to thank you for keeping our neighborhood to the school that it was originally districted. I know there's been many changes where we've been moved in and out of it. Brent and Garrisonville are both fine schools, and while I'd normally, you know, be okay with having my son attend those schools, due to his medical condition, as I've expressed to several of you individually and on email, we were very concerned with my son being at a school that is further away from Stafford Hospital, as well as further away from the teachers and administrators, as well as the nurses that have been fully apprised of his condition. He has a severe form of epilepsy, and the rides from some of those schools would be considerably longer, which would potentially impact the ability for him to receive the care that he would need in the event of an emergency, as well as the relationships and training from a lot of those teachers that have, over the years, gotten to know him and understood in an immediate emergency what would be needed to render the care. We have an emergency 509 action plan, and so we are very grateful for all the hard work you have done in adjusting these plans, both plans, to keep my son attending Winding Creek and keeping our section of Augustine North attending Winding Creek. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Kizner and the school board. I'm Kelly O'Connor at 1009 Columbus Drive. I'm speaking to you this evening as both a parent and a teacher in this district, actually from right here at North Stafford High School. In choosing between these two plans, I would like to impress upon the school board the importance of school culture. As a classroom educator for nearly 20 years in multiple states and various schools, I've had opportunity to work in many schools. What sets some of these schools apart is the culture, by which I mean the relationships among students and staff, and culture is built and fostered over many years. I'm very lucky to work in a building with a positive culture, and we are a district with wonderful elementary schools, whose culture has been carefully groomed by staff. However, school culture will be significantly impacted by movement of students. When large numbers of students leave a school and large numbers of new students enter, school culture changes. While we always welcome new students in our rooms and building, welcoming hundreds of new students is an entirely different task. When new students do not know the layout of a building or who staff members are, typically we can rely on classmates to help them. But when the majority of students are new to the building, the entire student body must be acclimated to the school's culture. In order to regain an appropriate level of trust and comfort that a school has come to know, it will take years. I strongly encourage you to consider the impacts on school culture when you make this decision. Plan E2-2 moves significantly fewer students than Plan E2-1, approximately 800 fewer. Therefore, I believe it is the better choice, and I hope you agree. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? I see one coming forward. If there's anyone else, if you want to line up, we'd appreciate it.
Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane. Wow, good to see you again. I saw you yesterday. Just so you all know, common sense is not common in the Commonwealth, so don't even go there. But hello, I do agree with the women from Embry-Mill. I thought that was a good line. Just for all of you who don't really understand redistricting, the 2020 census forces redistricting in every county. The audacity of doing it three times in five years, and especially the family who has four kids in four schools, I don't know who you're hiring, but their projections are not even close. If you listen to the last speaker, if there's a disparity of 800 students, then obviously, plan whatever you call it is not really a good plan. Just to remind you all that the county has grown in population every 20 years since 1960, and in 2020, it would have to be 185,000 people, which is not going to happen, because there's 55 square miles of Quantico, and that leaves only 225 square miles. Now, if you agreed with me, then one of us would be wrong, because I don't agree with any of your redistricting aspects. I've told you before to hire someone who has an operations research background, who will give you a topology, who knows integer programming, because people are not 1.1 or 1.7. They're all human beings. And then I heard something about the Peter something. Always remember, Lady Justice wears a blindfold for two reasons: fairness and transparency. She doesn't wear a pirate's patch on the right eye to favor the left, and I know you're all Republicans, so she must wear a pirate's patch on the left eye to favor you all on the right. And I wish some of you good will in 2019, because remember, Election Day is 237 days away. Remember the email I sent you this morning? Have a good day.
I don't have a lot to say. I don't have a lot to say. I'm very, very new to the school district. We just, we just moved here in August. My kids are five and 11 right now, they're at Moncur and Shirleyheim. It's a shame that we started, my daughter, at a, we, we just picked her up from Buffalo, New York and moved here, and it's a shame that as soon as she gets into a school, there's a possibility that she has to do it all again. But that's, that's kind of my problem, not your problem, you didn't know me then. I am, the, the thing that's concerning me the most about the way this was handled is that you guys are building a new school at Moncur, and you've asked the students to invest in that, to invest their time and their energy and their fundraising, and I see the stuff come home with my daughter about that, and you're going to pick her up and throw her in Hampton Oaks. You asked her to get excited about this, and you're going to pick her up and move her. And that, if you were going to do that, you shouldn't have asked the kids to participate. That's not the way it should have been done.
Could you please give us your name and address? Thank you.
Yes, Nicole Wamsley, I'm at 1002 Richmond Drive.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Johanna Parian-Holtz, I live on 37 Allegheny Drive. I'm from the neighborhood named Woodstream, and in one of your plans, the one named E2-2, I believe, we are in Little Island, and we have currently been in Island for a few years, and I would strongly ask you to please reconsider that. We have been in Island for a long time, and we really don't want to be in Island again. So thank you for tonight.
All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we'll have another one tomorrow evening at Stafford High School, 6:30. We appreciate you coming. If you want to come again, you, you can come there as well. Thank you.